Welcome to the Milford School Committee meeting of April seventeenth. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast through the local media outlets present. If anyone would like to broadcast, please contact a member of the school committee or the administration. Scott Harrison's running a little late, so I'm filling in for him. First agenda item is approval of the minutes. Has everybody had the opportunity to read the minutes? I'll give Dawn a chance to sit down.
Wait for me, Mike, go ahead.
Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as read? All in favor? None opposed? Minutes approved. Announcements, correspondence and distributions. Do I have any, Kathy?
We have one that Kevin has from Bob, and other than that, no.
Okay, Kevin?
So I have one quick announcement. I'd like to congratulate one of our community partners of the Hotel and Hospitality Management Program, which is Atlas Travel. Atlas Travel has expanded into the United Kingdom recently. This will only add to the global perspective students participating in the program will receive. And we have distributed the article to you this evening just for your perusal. So, thank you. Congratulations to Atlas Travel.
Very good. Next agenda item is invitation, I'm sorry?
I want to add something on distributions and stuff. I actually had a conversation this week with the Vice President of Admissions at Worcester State College. He's actually a good friend of my stepbrothers. And I wanted to, and I got introduced to him by him. And I really wanted to pick his brain as to why does it seem like it's a lot harder to get into the state schools today than ever before? And I don't know if you've had a chance to talk to any of the parents, but, you know, a lot of them are pretty frustrated and shocked that, you know, their kids that they thought were on par and certainly had everything they needed to get into a state school, would be able to get in. So they were kind of shocked that, it just seemed like a high level of rejections this year. So, so I met with this gentleman, really great guy. He's, he's from Austin P. University, that's where my brother-in-law knew him. And he was explaining to me that the rules have changed. And today for a student to get into a Massachusetts state school, their GPA has to be a 2.5. So it's no longer looking at, you know, so much as the SATs and other things. It's really, the guideline is that 2.5. And he was explaining to me that the historical data showed that anybody coming in under that just doesn't perform at the level that they need. And the reason why I wanted to bring that up is I'd like to see if we can't have our guidance, head of guidance, reach out to the state schools and have a similar conversation for next year so that parents and the students know what's needed to get in there. You know, I was talking to somebody who, who's, I think they said that they applied to six or seven state schools, and their child got rejected. And again, they were shocked because I think the child had like a 2.2 or 2.3. And, you know, it's fifty dollars a pop. And the guidance counselor was telling them, hey, apply for the state schools, apply for the state schools. So the parent was kind of upset that, you know, here's our guidance department telling them to apply to a state school, gets rejected by every single one. So, you know, when it comes to that, I think if we could have our guidance department reach out to some of the schools, understand what those guidelines are, so that way when they're giving children guidance and advice as to where to apply and how to apply and those types of things, that they have a higher chance of getting in there, so.
Kathy, first off, members, thank you. I apologize for being late. About a two and a half hour ride home from work today, which is normally forty minutes. So I apologize for my tardiness. So, there's an, there's a, we typically do a college night as we start to prepare parents for that process. Is that something that we could maybe even invite some admini-, some admissions officers? Maybe from like Framingham State?
Absolutely.
To come and maybe talk to, talk to some of the parents? I think that's a great idea. I think, Donnie, as far as making sure we've got communication out and adding some of that transparency around, if we can get some admissions officers for maybe some of the local state, and maybe even get a couple of different versions. So maybe we get somebody from a private college, somebody from like a Framingham State, so a state school, and then maybe even somebody from like a Maspe or Quinn Sig that's, you know, more of a community college. Kind of get three different phases.
You know what, you just brought up an excellent point. So in my conversation with this gentleman, and I apologize, I don't know his name off the top of my head, but he told me that for students that didn't get into a state school, their best option is to go to something like Quinn Sigman, right? And what he informed me of is to get into a state school from Quinn Sigman, your minimum requirement is four courses, so twelve college credits. And if you get a 2.5, an average of 2.5 at Quinn Sigman, they'll automatically accept you. They literally forget everything from your high school background, and they only focus on those twelve credits. And so, and the, you know, what he was saying is, you know, for Worcester State, Quinn Sigman's like their sister school. So they'll accept those twelve credits. So I mean, if a, if a child took five courses, they wouldn't skip a beat. They come in exactly where they're supposed to be. He said, you know, those four courses at Quinn Sigman, it's, you know, probably going to cost a student about three thousand dollars. So it's a nice cheap way. And if that student for finances wanted to do it for two years and save a lot of money, you know, you're not missing anything. They pick you up right where you left off. So just knowing things like that, you know, one, for the financial piece, but two, you know, how do you get accepted into a state school today? And then the other piece, he said, you know, it's amazing that, he was telling me that his acceptance was already at like a hundred and five percent, you know? He said, there's like a waiting room to get, to get into these schools today. So it's harder now than ever. I just wanted to know, you know, everybody know that I had that conversation. I learned quite a bit, and I think, like to your point, Scott, if we had somebody came in and educate the parents from the college side of it, would be a lot, you know, extremely beneficial for the parents.
Great. Excellent. Thank you, Donnie. What, at what grade do we have that? Is it for juniors? Is that what, is it the incoming junior class that does that, or is it sophomores? Or, I hope it's not seniors.
I think it's juniors, maybe with an invitation to sophomores, but we'd have to confirm that. I'm not a hundred percent.
We could probably get you, there's a, there's a whole curriculum for each kind of freshman, sophomore, junior and senior, and there's a whole process that we can probably bring to the committee at the next meeting or two. So you get a sense of kind of what's happening in terms of programming for each year. If that makes sense, it would be helpful.
Yeah. Thanks. Any other announcements, correspondence? I'm not sure, did you talk about, was it brought up? I don't know if this was the only topic that was brought up, were announcements and correspondence?
That's it.
Okay. One piece I did want to make sure that I did touch base on, and I talked with Kathy earlier today, I actually, on my extended ride, got a phone call from one of the members of the Board of Selectmen. I want to make sure that I, you know, very publicly reach out. And it was brought to my attention that there was a payroll accounting error that happened with teachers' payroll checks. I did just speak with one of the Board of Selectmen. He's, they are actually, the accounting area will be actually sending out a memo tonight. They are actually staying and actually cutting physical checks, or they will be mailed to teachers. They will not be made whole in two weeks, they will be made whole correctly this week. So their paychecks are being, it is being resolved. For those of you who are not aware, there was an accounting system, human error that was done through the system, through the town, through the town administrator's office, or town accountant's office?
Treasurer's.
Town treasurer's office. And as they were entering it in, they selected a button that essentially double taxed the payroll checks this week of every teacher in the town of Milford. So I had a conversation with the Board of Selectmen. Kathy and I spoke a little earlier today. I know that they've been frantically working through that. So first off, very regrettable circumstances. I'm very pleased to hear that not only is it being rectified, we're not waiting two weeks. The answer of, we'll wait two weeks and may become whole, I know didn't sit well with me, I'm certain didn't sit well with any of the teachers. When it comes to people's pay, we can't play around. So I'm very pleased to hear that the town treasurer's office is making that right. They're staying extra late. Checks will be mailed if teachers want that, but they will have physical checks that will be cut, and they will, don't have to wait two weeks for them to be made whole, they'll be made whole this week. Everything will be corrected. So I did want to make sure we made that.
Are those represented in here? No, we're good.
So.
That was Friday, the normal payday for teachers.
That's for this week's, yeah. So tomorrow is the, tomorrow is the regular payday for the teachers?
Wednesday was.
Wednesday was, okay. So it's being, the correction has been made on.
Just a couple of days.
Yeah, a couple of days, and it's been made available this week. So those are being corrected as we speak. Any other announcements and correspondence? All right. With that being said, we'll move on to invitation to speak. We have, it is a quiet room tonight, so seeing that there's, is there anyone here for invitation to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to subcommittee assignments. So I'll kind of give you the context on it, and we'll kind of talk about it, and I'll kind of go through it. So as we talked about at the last meeting, we have a number of subcommittees. I wanted, I had an opportunity last week to meet with Bob on Friday, get an understanding of kind of what subcommittees are out there, and there were still a bunch of them kind of flying around. So I want to make sure that we go through as we've had some, some new members join and some former members leave. So I want to kind of go through the subcommittees and, or make some, make some appointments from here. So the, I'll kind of go, some committees that are out there. So I've got the Woodland School Building, School Committee Representative. That's actually a designee, and for the, this is for the viewing public as well as for the new members as well, just to bring you up to speed. That's actually somebody that we've, it's been appointed as our, as our assigned member for the Woodland School Building Committee. It's something that actually had to be done well in advance as the project was starting to come up and get going here. That is Patrick Holland. That would continue to be Patrick Holland. He's the person that has been working through this project. I'd like to see him, and he's expressed interest in wanting to continue in that capacity. I'm not even sure at this point if we could try and change that.
I don't think so.
And I don't think we have any interest, so we're going to.
He's got so much information, he's been involved in so many meetings.
Yeah, it's not, I don't think we want to change lanes at this point, so. The next one would be the School Committee Reflection Subcommittee. And Joe, help me if I'm doing that, if I'm using the right name. I think that name has changed like a couple of different times. I think it changes every hour. That has Patrick Holland and Joe Marias on it, and if you'd be willing, I'd love to see you continue on with that. I know Patrick is, I know that you and Patrick had worked on that. I don't know where you guys are, I think we've got, are hoping to get an update later on this evening from that.
Yeah.
Not looking for one right now. If you don't have one, if you want to hold off, we can do that.
We'll probably have something within the next two or three committee meetings.
Excuse me, what is the name of that committee?
What do they do to?
This is the, yeah, sure. Good question. So this is the, this is the, the School Committee Reflection Subcommittee.
What, you going on retreats or something?
Yeah, this is like vacation, right? So I'll let Joe, I'll let Joe kind of talk about it a little bit.
Yeah, it's, it's a self-evaluation they're trying to put into place for the school committee. And there was some, some conversations about what to call it. And right now, we've settled in on, on self-reflection. So more to come there. But we're, we're very close. There's just a couple of details that Patrick and I need to iron out, but I think we're very close in presenting it to the committee.
Yeah, I think, not to put words in your mouth or steal your thunder here, I think it's, the idea of it was to kind of talk about how do we kind of set a mission for the committee? And setting a set of goals of what we want to try and achieve for this year. Right, each year over year, is that fair?
It is.
It's kind of directionally where you're headed? Okay. So that's Patrick and Joe. Then we have the Sick Bank Subcommittee. So the sick bank is, is from time to time, not, not very frequently, hopefully, because that would mean that somebody's very ill. Teachers do pay into a sick bank? Not just teachers, but many members of different unions? No, just the teachers' union?
Just the teachers.
Okay. So the teachers' union, each member of it pays into a sick bank. They essentially donate some of their sick days each year. And occasionally, there'll be a request to come through where we need, they'll ask to sort of borrow from the sick bank or use them additional sick days. That requires a, a school committee member to be involved in that conversation. That person has been Joe Marias. Joe, if you'd be willing to, I'd love to see you continue on in that, in that capacity as well. Great. Safety and Security Subcommittee. We have, is made up of Mike Walsh and Don Cattrocchio. This is something that, you know, these, these two gentlemen have really done a great job of spending a lot of time with administrators and kind of helping understand the full scope of what safety and security means, and working with administrators and law enforcement and, gosh, secretaries.
Secretaries, nurses.
And I think anybody that walks around the high school that's, you know, over the age of eighteen, I think they've worked with and talked to and helped run a lot of different things and just getting an understanding and helps continue to be that liaison for us with safety and security, adding cameras, working with technology. I think it's been, the feedback that I've received, and I know that the ongoing work, body of work that the two of you have done on this, I think has been invaluable. I'd love to see that committee continue on, certainly during my years, during my year here, and during the next twelve months. If you, the two of you would, would like to continue on that, I'd love to see the two of you continue on in that capacity. Yes? Great, so we'll continue on with that. Policy Subcommittee. So the two members for that were Christine Boyle, who's obviously no longer here, and myself. I, I do think at this point, I think this is also a very viable committee. It's not, none of these, just so we're clear, with the exception of, quite frankly, the sick bank and the School Building Committee, none of these are required. Not actually required to have any of these subcommittees. These are things that have been created to help either dig a little deeper or get a better understanding of specified areas where, that will then come back and report back to the full board, just so we're clear. The Policy Subcommittee is something that they go through and will literally evaluate. There are certain policies that need to be evaluated each year. Kathy, keep me honest as I'm going through this, and make sure I'm not completely talking out of the wrong side of my mouth here. They'll go through the different policies, if there's proposed changes. They'll help kind of redline it and give sort of a school committee lens on it. And then they'll come back and report and give updates as time goes, as times go on. They don't make any decisions. They're not, they can't, they can't form policy on that Subcommittee. It's really just, they get sort of a precluder look rather than having to A, have the first reading be on television, so that they can sort of spend a little bit more time and dig into it. Again, it's not to have nothing out in the open, it's more of just, actually, it's to help make it be a little more streamlined for the people that are writing our policies, as well as the school committee in general. And one of our chief responsibilities as a school committee is policy, the other would be budget. So I do think that this is a valuable committee. I think being able to sort of ask some questions and help in the efficiency of the school committee, I do think that this is an extremely valuable Subcommittee. Obviously Christine is not here, so we have at least one member. As chair, I will ask, I, I think I, I would like to probably step aside and probably pass that along. I actually would like to, kind of having been on it for the last two years, I think that there's some value in probably expanding that Subcommittee a little bit. So I'd actually like to request three members to be on that as well. The first one I'd like to ask is Joe Marias, if you'd be willing to serve on that committee.
Absolutely.
The second one would actually be you, Jen. Obviously, given your, given your background and working with education, I think there'd be a lot of value you could add to that as well.
Yeah, I was hoping to be able to join that.
Excellent, so, good. And then the third one would be, and since he passed it on to me when he became chair, I, no problem with passing it right back to him. And that would be Patrick Holland. I think having the three members, I think it gives us a good array, array of sort of a midterm member. We have a brand-new member, and we have one of our more senior members. So I think it's a good mixture of the three, and I don't think they'll have any issues with doing that. And Joe, I haven't forgotten you, I promise.
No, that's quite right.
Okay. So that, that's, those are some of the, sort of the, the current subcommittees here. As I was, as I was thinking about this, I'll be honest with you, and how we can make sure that we can continue to have impact and balance in sort of what's sort of facing our school committee right now and within the schools. I would actually like to propose and would like to actually add one additional Subcommittee. And it's around the ideas, as we look to expand our athletics program into the middle schools, and as we continue to get a good understanding of what really that means. I take spending, anytime we look to expand a program, create a program with the intention of expanding it, I think it's important that, you know, we really have a very good understanding of anytime we're going to ask to spend taxpayer money, especially with the understanding that we may are going to ask them to spend it now and maybe looking to spend potentially, expanding on that later on. I would like to, to make sure that we're actively involved in that process in supporting the athletics any way we possibly can. So with that, I would like to form a Subcommittee of an Athletics Subcommittee. And I thought about, from a member perspective, of who I'd like to see and ask to join on that committee. And first, I'd like to ask Joe Cowery, who's a new member. I think it'd be a good way to help get you, start getting you involved in something, you know, on a Subcommittee.
Absolutely.
And get you as well. The other person I was thinking about it is, based on his work on the Safety and Security Subcommittee, I'd actually like to ask Don Cattrocchio if he'd be willing to join that and help, and help spearhead that activity as well. You've done a great job on the, on the Safety and Security Subcommittee. I'd love to see you continue on. Mike, I think you're going to have your hands full with vice chair, so if you continue on with safety and security on that capacity?
Absolutely.
That'd be great. So, so we'll add one more Subcommittee, and that would be an Athletics Subcommittee. And that'll be with Don Cattrocchio and Joe Cowery on that as well.
So can I ask a question about?
Absolutely.
So that's, all of the other subcommittees I've heard of in the past.
Okay.
This would be something that I haven't heard of in terms of a school committee, school committee Subcommittee. So I guess my question would be, what would be the expected outcome? Is there, are there issues? I mean, I know you mentioned middle school, but what would be the, what would be the school committee's purpose in being part of an athletics Subcommittee?
Absolutely, great question. So here's, here would be my vision for it, and what I would like to see, the kind of the mission that I would see this, this group to get involved in is, one, when you add a different age range, and when you start adding multiple schools, from a understanding of how we can interact and if there's any support that we need to add, either in a budget, budgetary perspective or a policy perspective. And I would ask, probably the first piece that I would ask you guys to start to take a look at as a Subcommittee would be to look at the athletic handbook, handbook, and making sure that just as the Safety and Security Subcommittee works very closely, and will propose at times, and Jen and Joe, you'll see this as well, will propose, hey, we're getting a lot of questions around this policy, can it's something that can I recommend for the safety, for the policy Subcommittee to take a look at? I would envision this looking at it very similarly. There may be some, you know, it may even be something as simple as, hey, we've got this one policy and it sort of conflicts with this, can we take a look at that? It's, it may be things like, there may be some transportation issues that may be explored, and we may have to take a look at budgeting from that perspective and working with Lenny Marcone's office on that. So it's, quite frankly, it's a pretty broad-based committee of sort of working with, I would say, probably the athletic director, administrators, and potential, and also the coaches, to understand kind of how we, how we can help continue to work, move forward with, with the athletics, in particularly as we expand into middle schools.
So it's really more looking at ways that the committee would understand budgetary implications, ways of supporting budget, and with the involvement of the athletic director? So that person would be?
Absolutely.
Part of the conversations, part of the, I wouldn't imagine there would be decisions made in this committee just like there would be in the others.
No.
It would just be conversations and maybe bringing some issues, not issues, but proposed programming or things like that to light?
Right, so they wouldn't be able to make, so that group, just like for instance, the, any of the other subcommittees, you can't actually write policy that requires votes, and you can't allocate funds because that also requires votes. You can propose changes, so for instance, as an example, the Safety and Security, one is, and I apologize for keep coming back to it. One of the recommended changes that had come out was the addition of cameras. It was presented in front of the committee. Kathy brought it before us as a warrant issue. We voted on it for allocation of funds.
Right.
So it would be something along those lines of, you know, what does it look like? As an example, one of the things that I would also take a look at from an athletics Subcommittee is, we just, we're, we're investing a tremendous amount of money, the taxpayers are investing a tremendous amount of money with a new concession stand. I think that's wonderful, and we're going to have facilities that are going to be in there. Well, who's in charge of cleaning it? Who's going to man it to make sure it doesn't get decimated during, not the Friday night football game, but is it open for Saturday afternoon practices? And as you, as many members of the committee are aware, and as well as the community, we've got a tremendous financial investment in this. How do we make sure that we're protecting, that we're protecting those things? So those would be some of the things that I would look for. For that group to then, you know, go out, working with these other folks that are very actively involved on a day-to-day basis. And then just help, and then come back and report back to us.
I guess my only other, yeah, no, you're explaining it great.
Okay.
I guess my only other question would be, how would we compare something like this to an arts Subcommittee or an academic Subcommittee? So we, we have a policy Subcommittee, but policies don't generally deal with the way we roll out instruction, which obviously is a huge piece of why we're all around the school.
Right.
The schoolroom. So how would, why would we, why would we pick this over something else? Why would this be a priority over one of those other areas?
Absolutely, and right now, quite frankly, what's prioritizing it is the, is the fact that we're getting, we're on the verge of expanding into it. We're, we're taking a program that, for the history of Milford Public Schools, at least as far back as I remember, and as far back as certainly the last several decades, has only been in the high school. We're now starting to expand it across not just one middle school, but two middle schools. So as we start to expand that program, that's what's kind of bringing, helping bring this to light.
It's a programmatic change.
Yeah. That's, that's what brought it to light for me. I've had several parents that have expressed very, very, as well as coaches, and teachers in some cases, expressed concerns to me over, hey, this is sort of a big thing that we're looking to expand. What about, you know, like, what about the rules? Like, is it going to be different for, you know, transportation? Like, where are the practices going to be? And again, a lot of that comes down on the athletic director, but I also want to make sure that if there's support that's needed to be coming there, that we're engaged, because it's going to move much quicker than, quite frankly, this committee meets.
Right.
So I want to make sure that we've got some folks that are able to help bring that to light.
I guess, along the same lines, I'm, I'm struggling with seeing the benefit of having a Subcommittee to do that. And I think it's a slippery slope for the school committee, too. It almost feels like we're encroaching on some administrative responsibilities. Because a lot of what you just talked about in terms of the handbook and policy would be covered under the policies of Subcommittee and under the school committee. And then from a budgeting perspective, and we, you know, we talk, we discuss that on a regular basis. And annually, we determine the budget for the following year, like we did this year when we rolled out the soccer program. In terms of priorities, if we're looking for additional subcommittees to establish, I would think we'd want to focus on curriculum. There's so much going on right now with the teacher evaluation tool, Common Core, park testing. So I could see a Subcommittee to be informed to work with Kevin and some of the curriculum team leaders to just ensure that that gets rolled out properly and efficiently. And I would think that's more a priority than the athletic program. We're talking about one sport right now, soccer, that we might build on down the road, but we don't know if we're going to do that just yet.
And I think, so, two things. One, thank you for bringing that up. What I would say is this, I think athletics is something that we're continuing to, you know, expand and we're continuing to look at. We've been adding sports for a number of years, too, and continuing to make sure that we are providing that support from a, from a curriculum perspective. We did invest in that, actually, right before you joined the committee. He's sitting right there. And it came in the form of adding of a position. That was actually something that was examined pretty heavily during the year, during that previous year. And that was, as a result, we went from having curriculum directors. We actually spent several years, that was actually some, a body of work that was actually put in place that led up to, and the fruition of that work ultimately came to creating Kevin, you know, Dr. McIntyre's position with a curriculum director. You know, we had the curriculum team leads in a lot of that work. That was spearheaded by Bob. There was a lot of involvement from multiple committee members. So I, I agree with you. I think there's always more work to be done on curriculum. That's why we have a curriculum assistant, that's why we have assistant superintendent in charge of curriculum.
Before Kevin came on, wasn't there a curriculum?
There were curriculum team leads, yes.
Team leads, right?
Yep. And there was, and there was a team leads, and there was a lot of involvement with the school committee. So at this point, I don't want to, you know, Kevin's been in role just about.
About ten months now.
Yeah, about ten months now. And in creating that, and in creating that position, there was a lot of, there was multiple years of work that went into getting to that point. I'm certainly not expecting that we're going to, through us, through an athletics committee, Subcommittee, that we're going to get to a point where we're not creating yet a third superintendent. We ran out of room at the desks, so we can't hit anybody else in the room. And we have an athletics director. What I want to make sure is, is that we're, quite frankly, that we're helping support the athletic director in the best way we can as a committee. So at some point, will we, will we need to go down the arts route? We may. And at that point, we'll, I'll certainly revisit it, and if there's other members that feel strongly about creating a Subcommittee around arts or music or something, you know, you certainly are not, it's, I'd certainly be open to, you know, hearing more about that and having conversations around it. I think with, with the moves we're looking to make, I want to make sure that anytime we look to spend taxpayer money with an expanding program, soccer being one of them, but it was started off as, you know, I was thinking back and reflecting back over the last couple of weeks on the fact that. on the fact that it was soccer, and then it was, well, we're gonna do, you know, it's gonna be soccer this year, and then it's gonna be something else next year, and the program started, the conversation started to snowball pretty quickly. And I just want to make sure that we're much more actively involved than perhaps necessarily, you know, having to bring the Athletic Director in front of us as we bring up a, he's got sort of a sounding board of Committee Members that he can connect with, and that can connect with him of, hey, well, what about this? And they can, it's really a sharing of ideas is what I'm looking for. And that's really the idea of all of these subcommittees, is that sharing of information and sharing of ideas without having to wait two weeks. Or in some cases, for instance, over the summer where we only meet generally once per month, or maybe once for the whole summer. I want us to be able to provide much more support than that for the coaches, the students, and the administrators, the Athletic Director being chief among them. And make sure that he knows he's got the full, not just the full support of the Committee, but also that we're not gonna wait. We want to be there right alongside of him to help him and be supportive with him, and that's what I recharge these guys with. So, Don?
I mean, not to go back to the Safety and Security thing over and over again, but. I mean, Mike, I mean, you might want to talk about what we, you know, what we've seen about the collaboration of just getting these people together in a group, and how quickly things are able to change.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's really a, you're a liaison is really what you are. What happens is, as Donny said, we started with a small group. We started with Bob. We started with the two Resource Officers and the Principals. It's expanded to all Building Secretaries, all Building Nurses, still the two Police Officers, Bob, all the Principals, and it's really just their way to get to us, you know, without having to come before, as Scott said, without having to come before the Committee. It gives them an opportunity to sit down and talk with School Committee Members of concerns that they have. And some of those concerns are gonna require, you know, budgetary action. We can make that happen. Some of it, you know, the last meeting, we found out that some of the Lobby Guards aren't working properly. And they, you know, they come out and they express their concern, but nothing's being done with it. You know, and of course, our question is, why isn't anything being done with it? If it's a, you know, money issue, we'll, you know, if it can be done, we talked to Kathy. If we can do it, we'll fix it. So you're really, you know, you're more of a liaison, you know, if more people can get to you easily, then you bring it back to us.
I can say from my experience in being in a Subcommittee, the things that I've seen come out of it, you know, things like the double-entry door, the videos, the, you know, we're looking into the Lobby Guard. You know, all these little, little things that probably would have taken months, or if not slipped through the cracks. And it's not like Mike and I make any of the decisions. We're just, they, they tell us what they'd like, and then we just bring it up here to Kathy and get the budget approved. Or, one was, one was a policy, you know, if you're gonna come visit your child at the school, how you have to call ahead of time, and you have to schedule a meeting, and then figuring out the process of if anybody's gonna come to the building, they have, you know, using Outlook, pretty simple thing. Just getting the group together to figure out how to solve this problem, and then just making sure everybody's entering that meeting so the person at the front desk is aware of it. So, it's just things like that, just figuring out, you know, what's needed. And like Mike's saying, if there's budget or a policy like in that situation, just bring it to the attention of the School Committee.
Yeah. And it would be, and again, it's just, it becomes a liaison resource. That also then does work actually, and having served for the last two years on Policy Subcommittee, what you'll find is, is there'll be things that Kathy will bring to you, okay, we gotta review this policy or something else. There will be policies that will then, as a result of some of these other groups, that will be brought to your attention that quite frankly, just may not be on your radar screen.
Right.
To be able to review, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the only question that I still have is, school safety is something that it affects every child, every staff member, every day at all times. So the value of a Safety Subcommittee is, it's inherent to what happens in the schools every day. There's no question about it. We've gotta keep that focus on safety. Policy is what drives all the decisions that are made, and that really is our mission as a School Committee, and that I get completely. I guess, with the, my continuing question about the Athletics Subcommittee is, are there things that are happening on a daily basis and happening so quickly in athletics that they couldn't be rectified by asking the Athletic Director to report to the School Committee on a monthly basis? Because I would imagine that if there were issues like you're talking about, and I'm sure things happen all the time that require money, wouldn't, wouldn't the normal progression be that the Athletic Director would go to the Superintendent? And I may not know this, so, and the Superintendent would then come to the School Committee and advocate and say, you know what? We had this issue with the field, we need this repaired, or we have this budget concern because there's an issue with uniforms or whatever. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it to make it look like we were kind of overstepping into the Athletic Director's kind of realm because there may already be an avenue for him to express concerns through the Superintendent who he reports to, who would then bring it to us. And I would be all in favor of having, asking for regular updates because, you know, we are very involved in the athletic piece of things. And you would hope that you'd be able to support that person that way. And I'm not sure if he's asked for a Subcommittee because he's asked for that support, or?
So I would say two things. One, he actually doesn't report to the Superintendent. He actually reports to a Building Principal.
So he reports to the high, so, okay, so it'd be the High School Principal, not the Superintendent?
Correct. And in which case, it also, it is a liaison and a communication component for the Athletic Director.
Yeah.
But it's not just the Athletic Director. It's also, keep in mind, he will now have, as an Athletic Director, and again, this is where it becomes that liaison that helps that lines of communication. One, it's already two steps away, so it is the, I've got, the chain of command is, he's gotta go to the Building Principal, which then goes to the Superintendent, which would then come before the School Committee. And I think we've got pretty good lines of communication. I don't think that's been an issue. Where my concern again, comes back to is, is I want to make sure we're, A, to be, to answer your question, I don't know. And that's what I'm hoping the Subcommittee's gonna be able to uncover, is exactly what can happen. In addition to, we're now talking about rolling out athletics into schools to which the Athletic Director does not report. So we've got two extra buildings. Now it's only one extra Principal. It's one extra building. But again, it's the, so where does that Principal go if she has questions? Does she go to the Athletic Director? Does she come to Bob? Does she come to, so it helps create some of that. And to answer your question, I can't. I don't know what the answers to those questions are. But as we look to expand a fairly significant longstanding program in the town of Milford, which has been athletics for a long, long time, and arts and music, and believe me, you're preaching to the choir. I lettered in three sports at this high school and participated in every music group that existed. So I was very fortunate to be able to be the benefactor of the arts, the music, as well as on the athletic program and on the athletic field. So it's something that's very near and dear to my heart, and I just want to make sure that's, is this a Subcommittee that will exist five years from now? It may not.
Right.
Is it a Subcommittee that I think is valuable to start to uncover how we can be supportive? I believe so, and that's the reason for my creation of it and my selection of members to be able to join that. If there's additional subcommittees that people would like to see, I'm certainly open to that as well.
Sorry. I don't mean to beat this, so, has there been a need identified to improve communication? Have you had a conversation with Richie or Carrie or Bob about potentially putting this together? And what your vision is for, to see if they feel like this would add any value?
Sure, I did have a conversation with Bob about it during my one-on-one that I had with him on Friday, as part of creating the agenda. I brought it to his attention. I said, you know, as we continue to expand this, the sports program, this is something I'm thinking about, very similar to Safety and Security where it helps create that conversation, maybe, you know, ask some questions that maybe give a different perspective, help create that, some of that, some of that components that we've talked about earlier. And Bob was supportive of it. And Bob said, you know, I think that's good. I think it's important that as we look to expand a program where it's not academic, you know, to your point around curriculum, we have a curriculum, we have a Curriculum Assistant Superintendent, and we have multiple levels of positions, multiple heads around the table coming up with multiple ideas that have significant background in this. I want to make sure we're supporting Richie as an Athletic Director. He's one person as an Athletic Director. Whereas with curriculum, we've got a lot of experts around the table to help add a lot of different ideas, and all together we come, we come together. Whether it's Safety and Security, part of what helped create that was is, and a lot of the great ideas that I've heard Mike and Joe and Don continue to talk about was, having all the people in the room together all talking about it. And then part of, that would never have happened had that Subcommittee never been created. Athletics, I think, as we look to create that position, we're going across multiple schools now. We're going into art charter territory. I think it's important that we help provide that support. And again, it may be that they come back, and after their first meeting, they come back and go, you know what? We don't really need this. We're good. We're fine, and we move on. And you know what? Then that's what happens. But I think at this point, as we expand the program, we look to spend additional taxpayer money, I think it's, and we start going across multiple schools, I think it's important that we're at least giving a, you know, giving some understanding of where we need to go and how we may be able to help better support. So we'll continue on from subcommittees. The next piece we'll go into would be the School Choice Public Hearing and Participation Vote. So I'll.
This is, this is a housekeeping vote that we are required to take with the School Committee to continue with school choice, and it does require a vote for participation.
Okay. So I'll take a, take a motion as well, I'm guessing?
Yes.
So I'll take a motion from Don, second from Mike. All in favor? All in favor? I see the unanimous, and that will pass. So we'll continue accepting and participating in school choice. Good to know. That's a good thing. School Vacation Survey. Don, this is something that you brought up at the last meeting. And I know a couple other members had asked some questions about it as well, including myself. So, we'll turn that, Kevin, I think you've got a
Yep, I do.
Updated for us.
Yeah. Dr. Tremblay did some research, and in your packets is a survey that's modeled on a survey that Menden Upton gave to its residents, I think, within the last year. And consists of four questions that are pretty straightforward, and I think gets to the information that we're looking for. I just want to read those questions, so, you know, so you can hear them if you want to give any feedback. The first question is, February school vacation should be completely eliminated from the school calendar. And the choices for all four questions are strongly agree, agree, no opinion, disagree, and strongly disagree. So again, the first one, February school vacation should be completely eliminated from the school calendar. Two, April school vacation should be completely eliminated from the school calendar. Three, February and April school vacation should be consolidated into one week-long break, which should occur in March. And four, the vacation calendar should remain as it has been with both a February and April school vacation. And again, that's saying.
Can I ask why it wouldn't just be three and four? I mean, it's, it's
It kind of comes down to those two.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, to me, it's, do people want to keep it the same? Or, you know, would they be all right with combining? And again, I'm, you know, I want to make it perfectly clear, I'm not for this or against it. It means absolutely nothing to me. Really, it doesn't. It's just that it seems to be a pretty popular conversation across the state. And the reason being is because the way that we've added days off since I was a child, I know there's a lot more days off during the school year. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, with the weather situations, it seems that every year, and Bob did, again, I tip my hat off to Bob about the way he managed cancellations this year. I think that was one of the, you know, he really was one of the best in the area in that, in that. My point is, every year, schools are always wondering if they're gonna bump against that deadline. And last year, we were talking about, do we have kids come in on Saturday? Do we have a couple of half-a-days during April vacation? So, to me, it's just a question to say, hey, we can get five days back by taking these two weeks and combining it into one. I mean, you have your Christmas break anyway, so it just seems, and I would imagine some of the kids would love it because if you don't use those vacation days, then, you know, you're getting out of school a week earlier. So, all you're doing is gaining five days at the end of the year, and it gives us more of a buffer so that we're not running into, what's the deadline? Is it June?
July first.
July first? So, you know, the odds are, you'll never run into that. So again, it's just whether or not the community would be open to it, but I think if you just ask questions three and four, one, are you okay with combining them? Or two, would you like to keep it the same? It's as simple as that, you know?
The, when I spoke with Bob about this, and he actually presented that, that's actually essentially the same one that Menden had created. And I think somewhat similar to the ones that other towns are. I think part of it is, is, I think part of the request of the Committee too was, is we don't want to, our concern with potentially doing it has just been the concern of other communities, is sort of going it alone. I think some of
Yeah, Jen, you brought that up. That's absolutely correct. It should be, you know, a regional thing.
So the survey asks the identical questions, so you get similar data. So when you're analyzing the data, you're actually looking at all the same questions. That was Bob's methodology that he had shared with me around why he'd picked those questions. He literally took the same one and photocopied it. So it was just so, to get some continuity of data of some of our surrounding communities.
But we all know that when you ask questions, right? All right, fine, then put those two at the back. Because when you lead off with, are you okay with eliminating February vacation? Are you okay with eliminating April? I mean, it's got a negative tone to it right out of the gate. It's, you know, I don't know, I'm against those two questions.
Doctor, are you looking for our approval on the survey, so that it can be sent, or?
I, you know, I think that's the second part of the conversation, is when would we do it? Because you want enough of sample size too, to get a good sense, and how would we do it, is the other piece. So I think just getting feedback on the questions themselves is kind of the first part, and the second part is kind of talking about, does it make sense to do it in the fall via like an email or like Survey Monkey, internet-based survey? Or do we do something like it, open houses where we just hand people a thing and they just fill it out quickly? I mean, I don't know where we're gonna get the best response from.
I, you know, even since I brought this up in the last meeting, it's not like I've had a single person call me and say they're for it or against it. So it's, you know, it might be a mute point. And again, I mean, we already put the calendar in place for next year, so it's certainly not gonna impact anything right away.
I'll let you know after Easter. I have dinner with my family of schoolteachers.
I mean, is it, is it something you can bring up too of budget-wise? Is it more expensive to keep a week heated as opposed to a week air-conditioned? I mean, I don't know if every school has air conditioning, and I think my, my son's teacher actually brought her own air conditioner for the classroom. I mean, I know I wouldn't want to sit there at ninety degrees weather, learning anything. I don't know if that would be an issue to bring up too. Maybe save money in the long run. I don't know. I mean, that's a good question.
So, you know, what I, what I think I'm hearing, Jen, I don't want to know if any of the members have any comments or questions.
Well, one thing I might recommend is, if there could be a spot for comments, and if you collect, if this goes through Zoomerang or something electronically, usually that just spits out or collates all the comments for you because people may have a reason that may be helpful to understand. And then I guess my next question would be, is this going to be connected to like a calendar Subcommittee? Not a School Committee exclusive, you know, will there be teachers or parent representatives or someone from central office on a Committee that wants to get the results? Who will be looking, you know, is there a plan for that, or is that something that maybe could be thought of before the survey goes out?
Yeah, I think that's all, I think that's all part of the process.
Yeah.
Moving forward, we have to look at, you know, what are we gonna do based on the results? If we get, if it goes one way or the other significantly, you know, what's the process following that? I don't think we're there, quite there yet. But I think that would probably be what would happen. We'd probably bring some of our administrators, folks from the, some teachers, probably some of our other staff members together, so there's representation. And kind of move forward in that way.
I think what's important, though, we can't lose sight of the economic impact that it's gonna play on the families that have dual-income, working parents and children that, you know, are in school. And now we pull away, it may not seem like a lot, five days, but it's gonna have an economic impact on families.
Because it's, in addition to that point, Mike, I think, I think one of the things that I was thinking about with it too is, is how would we work with, how would it work with, like, for instance, the summer camp of Extended Day that we do over the summertime? Right now, there's a two-week gap on either side of the summer. This could potentially create a third week. Well, depending on how parents handle childcare, it's creating not only a potential childcare issue during the school year. You know, Jenna, use you as an example. You work in Milford and you work in a different, you live in Milford and you teach in, and you work in a different school system.
Right.
If your school vacations don't align, and now your start and end dates don't align. How would that impact? So, I think it's, I think the questions are probably sound. I'll be honest with you. I don't, if anybody has any strong opinions on the wording of the questions, one way or the other, adding or subtracting or anything like that, it's up to you guys.
I think it may be interesting to see if Bob would be willing to share this with, he probably attends a Superintendent's, like a job-like group or something like that. like a job-like group or something like that, if he was interested in, or maybe you probably attend one too. If other superintendents were interested in administering a similar survey, so we could kind of get the data, that we could be collecting it as well as surrounding communities, it might be interesting to see what results. Because everyone's talking about this right now. It's, this is a conversation that's happening in every single district.
Sort of a topic du jour.
Yeah.
So why don't we do that?
We could send, you know what, for the next step, we could send an email out to maybe the ten or twelve surrounding communities that are kind of part of the Blackstone Valley, different groups that we all belong to, and get a sense of kind of where the thought process is. Part of our advantage in Milford is we start before Labor Day, and that kind of gives us a buffer right there. It's really just a question of how are you shifting those hundred-and-eighty school days that you, that you have in play?
Yes.
Alright, so we can do that as a next step.
Yeah, so next steps, we'll send that out to sort of your counterparts in Blackstone Valley and some of the local groups.
Yeah, we can kind of send it out and see what people's kind of thought processes are. Because again, I don't think it can go out on their own necessarily with something like this, because it has implications.
Alright, so we'll move on from that one. Moving on to item number seven. Reported the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources. Can't we just hand this into the Kathy report? Just call this the Kathy report?
I know it's line title. I have for the committee's approval this evening, four warrants. It does require a vote. The first warrant is in the amount of sixteen thousand, eight hundred, five dollars and thirty-three cents.
Take a motion from Dawn, second from Jen, all in favor? All in favor, passes unanimously.
The second warrant is in the amount of one hundred, six thousand dollars, two hundred and eight and sixty-seven cents.
Take a motion from Mike, a second from Joe, all in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously, favor.
The third warrant is in the amount of forty-two thousand, three hundred, thirty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Take a motion from Joe Calory, second from Dawn, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
And the last warrant is in the amount of two hundred, eleven thousand, four hundred, thirty-five dollars and twenty-three cents.
Take a motion from Patrick, second from Joe Marius, all in favor? All in favor, motion passes.
I also have for the committee's review, the latest appointments and hires from our previous meeting. I do have a jury duty that does require a vote for Ms. Fay Norris.
Alright.
And for June 4th.
Alright, so can I take a motion from Mike? I know you love taking the motion. Take a motion from Mike, take a second from Patrick?
Happy to.
All in favor? Alright, motion passes, all in favor.
I do have a cost reimbursement request in the amount of three thousand, thirty dollars, and that also requires a vote.
Take a motion from Jen, second from Joe Calory, all in favor? Motion passes.
I do have for the committee's review this evening, the financial statement for April. And I am asking for a budget transfer to bring a few areas into the black to make us solvent. And one of those areas is addressing one of the areas, although the FinCom for two thousand and fifteen for our school budget was extremely generous and meant all of our benchmarks that we asked for, and they have moved them for approval. However, we were not able to fund the second phase of the textbooks in our request with the FinCom. So the good news is that the state has fully funded Circuit Breaker, and we received that notification last month. So I'm here to ask, I have provided all of the second-phase textbooks that Mrs. Benak has requested to bring the second and final phase to order. And that will complete our second phase of the scheduling impact to fruition. So with that, I am also requesting a transfer to balance our transportation issues that we currently have in the red. We will be able to bring our FY14 budget to fully fund all of those areas as well as the second phase by shifting, shifting our tuition expenses over to Circuit Breaker. So with that, I am requesting the school committee approve a budget transfer in the amount of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Kathy, just a quick question, what did our Circuit Breaker come in at?
Sixty-five percent, fully funded. One point six million.
Fantastic. Any other members have questions? Great, seeing none, I'll take a motion from Patrick, second from Donnie, and all in favor? Motion passes unanimously, favor. I do, I think we've got, we've got some gifts tonight?
We do, thank you, Mr. Harrison, I missed those.
That's okay. So the first gift, in the amount of fifty dollars, from Kathleen Corcoran for the Family and Community Network in memory of Alexandra Hummiston. So this does require a vote, I can just read them all off and do it as one. So I'll read them all off and we'll do it as one, one motion. Second gift, in the amount of fifty dollars, from Ellen Friedman and Bruce Rainier, family, community, for the Family and Community Network in memory of Alexandra Hummiston. The next one is Margaret Mahoney Leisure, in the amount of twenty-five dollars for the Family and Community Network in memory of Alexandra Hummiston. The next one is John and Ann Beard, for the Family and Community Network in memory of Alexandra Hummiston, also twenty-five dollars. Donate, a gift of fifty dollars from John and Judy Dagnes for the Family and Community Network, also in memory of Alexandra Hummiston. And, hopefully the final one, the final one that's in here is for, from ICF Business Operations Center. This is a gift for participation in the, for our participation in a health survey, in the amount of five hundred dollars. So I'll take one motion for all of it. Take a motion from Joe Marius, take a second from Joe Calory, all in favor? Excellent, thank you, very, very, very generous, thank you to all that donated. Can we make sure we're sending thank you notes? Thank you.
May I ask, was she a student or a staff member?
I don't, I don't know.
Her mother is a current staff member, and she was a Milford graduate.
She was, okay. So, thank you, and please definitely make sure we send a little more thank you. Alright, Kathy, is that, that's it for you?
Yes.
Okay, great, we'll move on from here. Report of the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assignment. I don't know where we get business cards that fit your titles on them, so if Dr. Kev, and I'll think that's, Dr. McIntyre, that's yours.
So I have, I have three quick updates for the committee tonight. First of all, the kindergarten assessment, that Teaching Strategies Gold, which I shared with you a few meetings ago. On April 7th, a team from the Milford Public Schools attended the Cohort Three Teaching Strategies Gold meeting to review and discuss the new assessment tool. We received a great deal of information, which is, which is kind of an understatement, and even connected with Jen Parsons on that day. Who was also, who was also attending. Or suffering through it. We have scheduled two two-day trainings for our teachers and kindergarten aides, scheduled for June 2nd and 3rd, and 4th and 5th, as well as other stakeholders. Additionally, the Millis Public Schools may be joining us for one of these two-day trainings as a partnership. The state is underwriting the cost of, of the trainings, as well as I think a good chunk of the substitutes, and we're getting, we're still getting that information.
That's great.
We're also meeting as a school readiness team to discuss the next steps for the implementation of this assessment system, and we're still working out the logistics for the training for computers and things like that.
Quick question, and this is kind of off-topic.
Sure, sure.
Do we, do we have the numbers for next year's kindergarten class coming in and what the needs are? Because, and I know that's always like the fuzzy, the fuzzy mark, and it's hard to find out, you know, what our needs are. And it seems like over the last couple of years, we've been asked to address that kind of in an emergency situation at the beginning of the school year, because, you know, all of a sudden, there's, there's been a huge jump in numbers, so just wondering.
We actually have a meeting on May 1st to look at the numbers with the elementary principals and the Family Resource Center.
Okay.
So I think probably after that meeting, we'd be able to give you some sort of an update on the, on the actual numbers. I don't, I don't have them at my fingertips.
As soon, as soon as you have that, if you could get that on the, you know, on the agenda, that'd be great.
So we might even...
To Donnie's point, as everybody knows, what happens, August comes.
Absolutely.
You know, we go in using a fictitious number, let's say it's a thousand students are going into kindergarten. You know, that's the number we get in June, and August we find out now it's jumped to fourteen hundred. Where they all coming from?
Right, right.
Everybody waiting, I think, so.
I think one of the things we're looking at at that meeting is what have, what have the trends been over the past few years in terms of like summer additions and things like that, to help in the planning process? But I think we could probably, either the meeting on the 1st or the 15th give, give a report. Depending on how that meeting goes.
Yeah, it was weird, because I, I thought I heard Hope Dale's numbers dropped off significantly. And so I had asked Bob, you know, if he knew what our numbers look like, but he told me it was coming up, so.
Yeah, so I think May 1st, we'll probably have a better sense of that. And we'll be able to put something together, at least to say, maybe the last couple of years, this is what has happened over the summer in terms of the numbers, in terms of growth, so that, you know, that'll help us with projections.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. The, the second, the second update is today, the Milford Public Schools held the first annual Let the School Day Games Begin, which is a, a program that's combined with Special Olympics and the Best Buddies Program, and it took place here at Milford High School. Students participated in opening ceremonies, station activities around athletics, an award ceremony, and, and lunch. The event was attended by students, staff, families, the president of Special Olympics, and several media outlets. I really want to thank and recognize the planning committee, which included Meg Belcito, Jen Walsh, Deb Friedman, Judy Dagnes, Len Marcone, Carla Tuttle, and Dr. Tremblay. The students had a great time, and this is an event that we would like to see as an annual occurrence. It was just, it was just a very, you know, high-energy, great event today. So it's just a, it was just a fantastic thing.
How many, do we have an idea of approximately how many were, attended?
You know, I don't have the numbers, it was, it was very well-attended, though.
Yeah, it's, it continues to impress me just, number one, what our teachers and faculty members, Jen Walsh and Meg Belcito and many of the others that you mentioned, just what a phenomenal job they do and the resources they're continuing to offer for Special Olympics and for our special needs students, I think is just amazing. How far we've come, so. Do you need a vote, or just a?
No, just, just an announcement.
Just an idea? I think that's fantastic.
Just, I just want to keep the committee price.
I think if we, the better we get, the more we can participate, the better.
I think there'll be some articles in the local papers over the next week or so.
I was, it's amazing from a special needs perspective, I was at a, my, my weekend appearance at a cheerleading competition. And this is our third weekend in a row of cheerleading competitions, one in New Ca, all over the state and all over New England. They now have a special needs student division that actually comes and competes at these. It's actually, it's, it's, the last one we went to was at UNH, and there probably were, I don't know, eight to, eight hundred to a thousand people. A, not a dry eye in the place when they finished, and B, everybody on their feet from the moment they walked on stage to the minute they walked off, so amazing. The continued support for Special Olympics and, and obviously wonderful when it's one of our own that's helping lead all of that.
And like I said, very successful program, but I just wanted to, to share that with the committee. The last piece is...
Oh, sure. I was just trying to look it up, don't we have their banquet coming up soon too, within the next couple of weeks?
I believe so, do we have a calendar update on that? It is coming, I think it's in, I think it's either the first week in May. I want to say it's like the eighth or something like that.
Yeah, I think it's coming up soon.
It's within the next few weeks, I want to say.
I'm, I'm sure Jen Walsh will make sure that we know when that is. I think it's, it's a great event, it's always a fun event to attend. We attended last year, many of us attended last year.
It is...
I think it's the 22nd, May 22nd.
Stats at six o'clock.
Yep.
Excellent. Yep, great.
And the, the last piece is district determined measures. I just wanted to share with the committee the, the following three implementation briefs, which are part of your packet, on the district, connected to the District Determined Measures Initiative. They include the Scoring and Setting Parameters, Using Student Growth Percentiles, and Investigating Fairness. And these are some of the documents we're going to use that will provide guidance for our April 29th meeting, when the Milford curriculum team convenes and begins working on the next phase of the District Determined Measures Program. The Scoring and Setting Parameters Brief provides guidance on how to determine high, moderate, or low growth for various measures. The Using Growth Percentiles presents a relatively user-friendly explanation of how to use median student growth percentiles and the evaluation of teachers and administrators. And the Investigating Fairness Brief answers the question, how do I ensure the district determined measures are fair assessments of student growth and educator impact? And that looks at topics such as understanding error, using professional judgment, checking correlation, checking for variability, and looking at comparable assessments across grade levels and subjects. And the reason, the reason I'm sharing them with you is I just want you to get a sense of what the teachers are engaging in as part of this process, and it's a very complex undertaking.
Excellent, any members have any questions or comments? Excellent.
It's a huge undertaking.
It is, it's...
I mean, I think that it will just be so important, however it gets rolled out, so it's not so overwhelming. And with everything the DESC is throwing down on us, it's, it's impossible to keep up with it all the way that we're being asked to. So I think as districts, we have to look at, what can we say, we can't deal with this right now? And what can we say, this is really critical, especially at those, you know, degree levels where we don't have an MCAS or a PRC or something? And how are we, even the kindergarten assessment that Kevin mentioned earlier, it's, I don't know, how many indicators are on that? Thirty-something?
Yeah, I think it's thirty-eight.
You know, they're expecting kindergarten teachers to walk around with an iPad and really be, you know, typing in notes on these kids and things they're observing all day long. And when we think about that's potentially going to be used as a DDM for our kindergartners, it's, there's so many things that we're asking, and I think it's, that's the challenge for us as a district to figure out what, what's a must-do, and how can we take some of this and pare it down so people can go to work every day and still feel like they're teaching kids and making an impact.
Well, Jen, for those of us that were around, when we had to sit through the meeting with Ann Sullivan, remember she was an hour, hour and a half long, we had to sit, and she, she was the former attorney for the Massachusetts Teachers Association, and she explained the whole new program. She got to the very end, and I raised my hand, and I said, I'm, please, I'm not trying to be wise or disrespectful, but the people that put this program together, how much time did they actually spend in a classroom? She said, very little. I said, that's very obvious. Because, you know, not being an educator, I could look at it and say, phew, wait a minute here, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's a really, really tricky balance between having the information you need to make good decisions, but remembering that they're, they're kids, and no matter what level they're at, whether they're five or they're fifteen, they, things come up during the day that have to be addressed, they're priorities. And this, the stuff is, it's just very, it's very tiresome for teachers. They're, they're getting tired.
It, it is, it is, and, and we're trying to be very sensitive to that.
Yeah.
And part of the approach we're taking, especially with the District Determined Measures piece, is we're really focusing on the conversations that are going to come out of, you know, these assessments, rather than turn it into this, you know, I think I was meeting with a couple of teachers today on a couple of their proposed district determined measures. And I said, you know, Bob and I are sitting in the, you know, the central office going, wah!
It's such humor all of a sudden.
And coming out of, so it's really just about trying to have good conversations around these things and not really seeing it as a big stick, because I feel like, and I've been in nearly every classroom in the district at this point, and I see a lot of great teaching going on and a lot of great practice. And we have a lot of really good professionals in the Milford Public Schools. So it's really kind of honing the practice, having discussions, and really trying to make it as manageable as possible. And that's really, that's really the goal.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Excellent. Any other members? Alright, thank you, Dr. McIntyre. We'll move on here to, any members have any new business?
Non-member.
Kathy Perry.
Favor. I, I apologize, I received two out-of-state field trip requests, and I just received them yesterday, and I don't want the students to miss out on the field trip. And if we wait to the next meeting, unfortunately, we'll, they'll have to reschedule. So I am asking for your approval for the Guidance Department to take students to Johnson and Wales on April 29th. And that does require a vote, as they will be traveling to Rhode Island in their efforts out of state.
Any members have any questions?
Leo, just, why is, today's the 17th, so these are about ten days away. Is there a reason why they weren't sort of cutting it close, or?
Well, I have two high school requests, so I think I have to have a conversation and let them know that they have to be a little bit more timely.
Max, you know, reason why we wouldn't want students to go and visit these schools?
Right.
This one, Bob actually mentioned to us last, the last meeting, this was part of the hospitality group. So he was trying to get this...
Oh, yes, 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 I do remember that.
Yeah.
I think this was pulled together actually fairly, fairly short-term, I think, I don't think this was planned.
Can we vote them both together, Kathy, or do you need a motion?
Sure, let me, just for record-keeping, the second out-of-state is again for a trip to Bryant University. It is the English High School. It is the English High School, grades ten and eleven, um, and that is being held on April thirtieth. And it is to, again, Rhode Island. Therefore, requires a vote.
Okay. Any members have any questions? Alright, so we'll take a motion from, uh, Mr. Walsh, take a second from Jen, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Alright, any other new business? Seeing none, we'll move on. Any old business? Joe.
I spoke to Pat from the MAS C today, so we're all, we're confirmed for May first. They're looking forward to coming out and meeting with the committee and, and talking about their, um, services and programs that they have to offer.
Very nice.
Excellent.
Thank you, Joe.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Joe. I know you've been working really, really hard on putting that together for us. I really, I'm excited and looking forward to that.
Yeah, it'll be good.
Uh, see what their presentation looks like, so thank you.
Joe's my morning ride to work. He calls me while I'm driving to work and be talking in the car.
That's good. Uh, any other, uh, old business? Alright, uh, seeing none. Um, so, uh, we do have an executive session tonight. Um, let me read my, my little disclaimer here. Uh, we are, I, I will take a motion to move, uh, to adjourn this meeting, and then we'll move into, uh, executive session. We will not be returning. Um, so we'll move, be moving into executive session regarding a contractual matter for the Milford Teachers Association. Um, we will not be returning to open session, so this will require a roll call for executive session.
I agree to enter executive session.
Let's start with Patrick.
Aye.
I agree.
I agree.
Joe?
I agree.
Yes, Tony, and I as well. Uh, so we'll take a motion for adjournment from the open session, from, uh, Mike Walsh, and a second from Joe Calory, all in favor? And, uh, we will not be returning. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.